Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting, Tuesday, March 3, 2020. If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have two items on the agenda, which is, one, is to ratify the adjustments to the town manager's proposed budget, and number two is recommend town and Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2020-21, incentive public caring. So right now, Carl has stuff that he's going to hand out to everybody, which will give the original budget numbers and the budget cuts that he's proposed already, so everybody can have a copy of this.
So this is a summary. Go over, on the left-hand side is what you were presented with earlier in the budget process, and highlighted some of the relevant numbers for you in terms of the total budget, what the percent increase was, the amount to be raised by taxes, which also has to be focused on, and then what that translates into the mill rate. So when we started this budget process, we were looking at six tenths of a mill increase, 1.92. The right-hand side reflects the budget revisions that were suggested to you last week, which was another 101,000 in cuts, so that puts the tax rate increase at 0.46 mills, or 1.47%. So the minimum starting point of the evening is a motion here that codifies what those amendments were, and for memory's sake, there were two adjustments to the revenue. One was increasing the interest, the tax interest means and fees by 20,000. Education, the special education reimbursement was estimated to increase by 100,000. On the town operating budget, there were reductions to the state retirement contribution for what goes into MERS, slight reduction in health insurance, and a slight reduction in legal services. And then, under capital improvements, there was a removal of the exterior painting of the fire department headquarters, a restoration of personal protective gear for a net reduction, and then removing the grounds mower from the public works ask, with the proviso that there would be a motion to amend the pre-existing capital authorization. There are two lines in the public works budget, which if deauthorized and reappropriated could address the same needs. So this reflects the path that's been presented for you at a minimum for this evening, and if there's further revisions you want to make, this would be the time to start making any other revisions to the budget that you have.
So I guess at this point, if somebody would like, we can make a motion as presented to us here, and then we can make any adjustments and discuss during deliberations any adjustments we'd like to do to this budget, and then we can just make amendments to the motion once we're all finalized, if everybody's comfortable with that.
So are you saying make the motion, this specific motion?
Correct.
This page, but not on the overall budget, just on this motion?
Correct, and then we can discuss during deliberations any other cuts people you don't want to talk about. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, any discussion, sorry. So at this point, anybody's got any suggestions of what they'd like to do? Now's the time to talk.
But we're just talking about this specific motion?
Correct.
Unless you want to amend it to reflect other revisions, because the next motion would be the budget.
Because they go off to the public here. So this would be the first forum to start making amendments to the budget.
Well, I'll make a comment. First of all, nobody in this room has any idea what the revaluation is going to cost the town. More than likely, it's going to be increases. There are towns around here as much as 7% change in the revale. I think we have to be concerned about that on this panel, and to me, I don't necessarily want to go nickel and diming, you know, one department over another. I would just as soon leave everything the way it is, take some money, put it towards capital improvements and cash, and reduce as close as we can to 0% and help the taxpayer this year as much as we can, because we have no idea what's going to happen next year with property taxes and what the increase could potentially be. So my feeling is, what's it going to take to make a reduction, a significant reduction to this budget? Carl's done a tremendous job, I thought, getting us to the point we are right now. I think it behooves us to do something to get it lower, and to help the taxpayer out this year, because next year, they might not be in a, we might not be in a position where we can help them as much as we can this year.
Mr. Chairman, I agree quite heartily with Tim Guerra's assessment, and I've gone a little bit further by actually making suggestions of how we could make those cuts in the capital expenditure side of the budget. If you like, I'll go down them.
Yep.
And Public Works Department, we have $220,000 to buy two medium-sized trucks. I propose that we put that in the cash column. Also, there's a $40,000 crew leader truck. I propose to put that in the cash column. On the school side, there's a school roof project for $60,000. It's a small roof, and believe it or not, if we do that one roof this year, and with, it's going to be happening in the summer through a bonded issue, we'll be all done with our school roof projects for probably 25 to 30 years. So I think I'd like to see that get over and done, and pull that $60,000 out of the school roof. And on the town-wide infrastructure, I'd like to propose that the $80,000 generator and the $75,000 building repairs, parapet caps, clock tower railing repair be taken, paid for out of undesignated. And just so the public understands where I'm coming from, these are all one-time item expenditures, just so the public, I'm not trying to preach today, but maybe for the public out there that's not here tonight, you never try to use undesignated funds on your operational side, because once you establish that hole, it never gets filled up. Later on, two to three years down the line, you're looking for that hole. But when it comes to capital expenditures, one-time events that hopefully you won't have to do again for 15 to 20 years, that's where you take some of your savings and expend them. And the final item, of course, would have been the town manager's suggestion about the fire truck. He wants to establish a reserve, putting $350,000 every year away. The first two times that we do it, we'll probably buy the next truck that they have to buy, but then after, we'll always add 350, 350 when we can, and so the next time we have a big truck expenditure, eight to 10 years from now, we'll have the money for it. So if you add that 350 that Mr. Kilduff has already put in there, that comes to a total of $825,000. Now, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but I think we all know that this budget goes into effect July 1st. Immediately on July 1st, there are funds that will be added to that undesignated that are not in there yet. And that being, and anytime I speak out of turn, please Finance Director jump right up and... We have approximately $900,000 coming back from FEMA refund. We have 200 and...
That's in the budget already.
That's not in the budget. It's not added yet. It doesn't get added until July 1st.
Hey, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I always thought that too, Carol, but checking, there's 200, approximately $230,000 coming in for our successful roof project of the school from last year. We got refunded from the state. That is not added yet to the undesignated. Also, we have $60,000 that came in from the state for our project up there at the park rack. So there's probably, just rough off the top of my head, a million or a little bit over a million dollars that will be added to that undesignated surplus come July 1. So I feel if we take out 825, we're still adding, we're going to have a couple hundred thousand still to add to the budget, so we will not lose our 15% standing with Mr. Moody. And so I think this would be an appropriate way. I agree with Tim that, I think once, I keep records, believe it or not, folks, all the way back, if ever you had to take taxes. I can't remember the last time we ever had a flat, or zero, and projecting ahead, it may never happen again for another 10, 15 years. I don't know. Like Tim said, immediately, we have revale next year. So that is my proposal of how we could find the 825, and I just throw it out there, sir. Thank you.
Carol?
Okay. First, I'm confused. Sue, I thought we saw that money added into the budget already, the 600,000 from standing and all that.
It is in the current year, but it doesn't get reported to the fund balance until the courts are closed.
Okay, so in fact, the money is in the possession of the town of Clinton.
It is.
So is it showing up right now in that fund that they're referring to to spend? No?
It is not.
Okay. All right, so my understanding is, Tim, you have proposed offsetting the changes that the revale may establish today, giving, using contingency or general fund money today to offset what will in fact appear next year?
No.
When the numbers come in?
No, that's not what I said.
Then, okay, can you clarify that for me then?
What I said was, I'd like to reduce the budget this year to get as close to 0% so that the tax or the mill rate will be reduced even further, to try to get it as close to zero as possible.
So how did you propose to get to zero?
Well, I'm not proposing it to be exactly zero. Dennis has already proposed on how we can reduce $825,000 out of this budget.
But it's not reducing it. It's just moving it and paying for it another way. You haven't proposed eliminating anything from our spending package here. You haven't proposed taking a truck out, or taking a roof out, or taking other things out. You are only proposing paying for it in a different way.
Pay for it, that is correct.
So at the end of the day, it's still coming from the same pool of funds that we have.
No, it isn't. This is tax money already. This money is sitting in your savings account. These people out here, and the people on that camera, have already paid for this, with their taxes. This is in your undesignated surplus. If you left it in the budget, it would then come out of the taxpayer's pocket.
Well, if your concern is about, maybe I'm confusing the two concerns that you have in that, I'm thinking that if you want to go forward with a zero tax increase this year because you are concerned with how the revale is going to affect taxpayers next year?
Forget the revale. Get that out of your mind.
I never mentioned it, he didn't.
Just forget the revale. What I'm just, what I'm saying is, the revale, you don't know how it's going to affect us next year. So let's take the opportunity this year to get our tax rate as close to zero as possible for the citizens of this town.
Well, you know what? I guarantee that every single person on this board would love to see that happen. I know I would love to see it happen. I've been on this board forever, and always my goal is 0 or 1%. And the practicalities of moving the contracts that we have and the fixed expenses that we have forward absolutely define that it cannot be zero, much as we all would like it. Unless you can come up with that specific list of where you would cut to bring it down to zero, then it's just, it's just, you know, wishful thinking. Because I've looked at every item on here, and I've come up with about $50,000 worth of cuts, and then I go back to this piece of information that Carl gave us from day one, saying to impact the mill rate, $15,000 in cuts reduces the mill rate by 0.01 mills. So my $50,000 would be 0.03 mills, which is essentially nothing. The proposal that we have tonight is for an increase of 0.46 mills, so that would make it 0.43. Do you think that the average taxpayer would notice a $50,000 cut? They would notice if it went down to zero and there was no, and the total, the total charge was down, but they would also notice that there would be fewer police on the street, there would be fewer hours at Town Hall, the dump would be effectively closed because the mirror costs that are coming our way are extraordinary. I mean, it's just, it's pie in the sky thinking, and unless you can show us exactly where you see those cuts coming from, then I just don't, I can't see the purpose of having that discussion.
Christine?
I absolutely agree with Tim, and I appreciate that Dennis has itemized it specifically. What is being recommended, if you take your capital, 10-year capital plan, is instead of taxing the taxpayer for the 1.4 million under the recommended section, and instead moving over to your cash surplus, which currently stands at 386,000, you would then be using cash, you would not be taxing the taxpayer, and then that would eliminate that burden on the taxpayer should the mill rate increase, and then also your revaluation cause your property value to increase. That would be a double whammy potentially in the next year. So I absolutely agree with that recommendation, whether or not it can be done for each of those projects, and whether or not we have the appropriate amount of money in cash surplus, and where we stand with undesignated funds, whether or not we really are going to reach for 15% and continue to add money to the undesignated, or stick with what S&amp;P recommended, which was 12%, is a question for the town manager and the council as well.
S&amp;P has never said 12%. They're currently tracking against 15%. 15% was the goal supposed to be met when we just issued bonds this year. How they calculate the 15% is different than Moody's, but it is not 12%, it is a 15% benchmark. So having an undesignated fund balance at 15% or higher keeps us in good stead for having a bond rating agency that we can use to bond, to rate our debt when we issue it. You still have authorized but unissued debt capacity, so other projects still exist in the pipeline. You've got bond anticipation notes that you'll have to convert over to bond, formal bonds, so you probably should be careful to make sure you don't get too close to being on the razor's edge of 15. And all of this discussion of revale, again, you want to be mindful that having fund balance available for next year is also important to make sure that you've got that ability to respond next year to adjust the mill rate so that you can cushion whatever the tax consequences are of the mill rate.
I would agree with that. So what I've heard thus far is, a certain number of capital projects would come out of the column to be paid for out of taxation, and would go into the column and be paid for out of appropriating fund balance. That would increase the applied fund balance revenue line item from 450, which is currently proposed, to add another 375. That takes you up to 825,000 for that revenue line item. That fits within the 15% target that you need to be at for Moody's, or for S&amp;P, excuse me. It puts the mill rate at 31.47 mills, an increase of 0.22 mills, a tax rate increase of 0.694%. So you're well under a 1% increase. The average taxpayer would see a $45, 57 cents increase in tax.
That's the individual that is based on the $200,000 assessment?
210,000.
210.
So that's the average.
So a person that had a $210,000 assessment would get a $49 raise for the...
45.
45.
Gold, and it was what, 96?
Yeah, something like that.
Do you have anything? Well, I mean, I guess some of the things that I struggle with is that, you know, we're starting something new, you have a town manager that's coming in, there's a lot of things that are going to change across the town, departments, how things are run, things that would, and there are places that we can save money in town, that the town manager would be involved in to kind of help us on that end. The revale, again, you know, it's the great unknown what's going to happen. We all like to say it's going to be raised. Again, then we should need to protect ourselves for when that's coming through, because if it's going to get raised, we need to be flexible to do that down the road, to be able to have that ability to help the taxpayer out at that time. I'm not against capital, you know, adjustments. I just don't know if it's worth, you know, you're going from 40, you know, 96 down to $45, you know, to spend, you know, a lot of money. And I think, you know, to me, I think there's some stuff that will change down the road that will help benefit our town in a lot of the different departments, and that we would see more savings down the road as opposed to what we're faced with now. So that's what I struggle with, so. But again, it's up to the whole council.
Do we have a good understanding of where potential revales are going? An assessment, did the assessor provide any indication of 2019 from other towns, so that we know, like some sort of...
Percent increases in other towns don't really shed any light in terms of what's going on in Clinton. Clinton has unique properties, you're on the water, you've got, a Clinton revale isn't going to look like anybody else's revale. So getting indicators of what other towns have is fine for those towns, but that's not an indicator where Clinton is going. Clinton has its own real estate market, different things are happening in town along waterfront, you've got some commercial development that other towns don't have, so you have an activity level that takes place here. And given the fact that they're still doing fieldwork, it's premature at best to speculate today where values are going to shake out for the grand lists that would have to be signed to end of January of next year.
I guess, you know, with that out there, and everybody's concerned about that, that's, you know, for me, where we'd like to kind of pull back a little bit this year, because there may be some things that we're going to have to deal with next year. Everybody's looking at it that this, you know, this revale is going to be increasing as much as everybody says it's going to be, which is, you know, anybody's guess on what it's going to go up, because nobody knows. Anybody else?
So I had a question on the contingency and the increase with the contingency. You had indicated that the union contracts should be settling out, and you put in additional buffer for that. What is the expectation that we would need that additional buffer, knowing that the health insurance is actually going to decrease? Are we anticipating some sort of large hit in terms of settling out contracts? And is that why you need to add the addition to that? Or is there, as Chris had indicated, there's additional things going on in town that will be coming down the pipe?
Well, I mean, there's certain things that we'll work through with RFPs on what we've been spending in the past, the amounts of money that we've been sending for legal counsel, for engineering, all those things need to get looked at that haven't been looked at in this town for a long time. Not to say that we'll be changing it, but it's something that the town needs to look at, because there are places for us to save money along those lines.
But it's not within contingency?
Well, right, but you were talking about the things that, you know, I said was coming down the road. That's what I look at. I look at, if you have savings on an operational side, that is going to flow through, and you will see some savings on the town side.
So contingency and union contracts, I really wouldn't want to discuss negotiating strategy in a public meeting, but by way of budget practice, contingency exists for unknown and unbudgeted. So you don't know what your unknowns are, you don't know what your unbudgets are, you have to carry some level of contingency. We know we're going to be in negotiations with all of our collective bargaining agreements. We know that odds are there's going to be some sort of salary increase that will come out of that. What that increase is going to be is a subject of what gets hammered out of the negotiating table. I'm trying to make sure that you have the funds in place to transfer from contingency out to the salary line items in the event of a contract settlement that gets reached within the fiscal year. So it's, if you can tell me how many unknowns we're going to have, you could pull the number down.
Yeah, I'm just looking at...
I mean, I'm looking at market rates, I'm looking at history of contract settlements. There's enough information out there that gives me a good ballpark of where we're going to land, one way or the other. So it's just a matter of what your stomach is for the budgeting something for the unknowns.
Yeah, I'm just looking at certain lines that did increase, and if there's any flexibility in them to bring the budget down just a little bit for that reason.
I can't speak to what the budget practice has been here during contract negotiations, the budget practices everywhere else that I've worked. There's always an increase in contingency during years of contract negotiations, and that's the usual standard practice.
And there was one last year as well.
Any other discussions?
Well, I'd like to make a comment, because we have one member that's not here. That one member's vote could be critical, so I don't know if you're planning to have any vote tonight, but you might want to delay it until that person is available to fill out the voting.
I did have a conversation with Mark, so we did, you know, we did, he did talk about it, he did have some suggestions, and we did work through all that kind of, you know, all the with hands as well. So, I mean, again, not knowing how we, you know, how we would vote on the budget, but again, that'd be open to everybody here, whether or not they'd want to hold off or push it through. I mean, we have a quorum here, we can vote on it, so it's kind of up to everybody, and I want to proceed.
Well, I think you almost have to vote on it, don't you, Mr. Chairman? To keep in the timeline, which are town hearings, and then to get to the budget vote itself.
So I mean, right now on the table then is a capital, right, capital increase?
So the motion is being amended to increase revenue of the general government applied fund balance for capital, currently sits in the budget of 450,000, so the amount of the council recommendation is to increase that line by another 375,000, taking the revenue line up to 825,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'd just like, if you have any thoughts on it, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, listen, I, you know, I, I just struggle, you know, with capital a lot, so. You know, I mean, you're, you're looking at, you know, a town that, you know, struggles sometimes to make sure that we keep where we're going to be, and make sure that we're in a position when we do get bonded and everything else, because we have bonds out there, and, you know, that, that's going to have an, an impact on us as well. And you just want to make sure. We always, we talk about a lot of the unknowns, but, you know, I mean, just been to talk about the school. Well, you know, I mean, I don't, we should never be talking about the school, because we don't even know when that will close. So, you know, yes, that's out there. That's something that eventually, hopefully, will happen. You know, but to talk about that now, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we really need to bring that into the conversation. So, you know, three seventy-five, I mean, you know, if everybody's comfortable with that, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, like I said, it's a mill rate decrease, right, down to point six nine four from the, you know, where are we at? Point, uh, where are we at, twenty-two? One point four seven, so. Yep.
I've wondered if, Eric, can you?
Well, yeah, I do. I, I don't, this is even the time to introduce it, but, uh, I'm very interested in getting those funds back and for a director of land use plan. Is that something anyone here would be willing to consider?
If you want to try to put the planner back in. Personally, I don't think it's time for us to be putting that back in. I think we need to kind of just, you know, step back on that and wait and see how things play out down there. You know, obviously, we all know that there needs to be changes in that department, but technically, pumping it back in at seventy thousand dollars is, we're, we're talking about decreasing a budget, but yet we're talking about now putting a planner back in, and seventy thousand's not the number. So the number to get somebody who's going to be higher than that, at a minimum of probably fifteen to twenty thousand more in salary alone, and then benefits.
Yes, but money for benefits, which we didn't have in the past, so it's.
I just wanted to put on record that I think that's a major concern.
Well, I mean, these are the things that we all, we know, we all talk about. I mean, it's, you know, the planner, the, the, you know, we're interested in the senior center. Well, these are all things now that people want us to do in town, but they have to understand there's money involved in these. It's not a simple process. People will say, hey, let's put a senior center. Well, how are we going to run that senior center? You're going to get a director, you're going to have somebody to cook the meals. There's, there's money that needs to be set aside to set that up. So, you know, these are some of the things that we would like to do as a town, that the council's been presented with, but how do we do that? You know, on one side, we're sitting here, we want to cut this thing to zero, but now we would like to get a planner, we'd like to get a senior center, so.
Well, now I just realized.
No, I know, but these are things that we've been talking about. So, you know, I, I think that's, you know, something else that we have to kind of think about as well.
I, I would absolutely concur again on the planner. I, I think everybody at this table certainly knows I'm supportive of the planner. We have three significant, two major developments taking place in town right now. And both the land use boards and commissions need leadership and guidance, um, both at their meetings, but on a day-to-day basis in the land use office, as well as having somebody within the land use office that those, um, folks can communicate to. Um, there's been opportunities that have come and gone, because nobody's been in the land use office to direct them to the appropriate place. Um, we started to see some of that resolved with having CIRP in the town hall routinely, and they were able to help support some developers coming in, and some local business owners who had interests in developing their, or broadening their business, and they did need direction. So right now, we're sort of taking a step back from that. Um, I appreciate that we're trying to do that for the sake of the taxpayers and the budget, but I think it's pennywise, pound foolish, um, having experienced the land use process, as Chris has as well, without that director or support that I absolutely think is necessary. But I, you know, I do understand that we're in a different scenario, and, um, to put forward a budget without that, that professional support.
Anybody else? Alright. What do we want to do? You want to make the motion?
Motion is to be amended at the minimum to reflect.
Want to make that motion to increase it? Do you got to make a motion to increase?
I'll make that motion to, uh, increase applied fund balance. Apply three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So the motion is to amend the existing that you have in front of you, add a new revenue line item under general government, applied fund balance capital increased by three hundred and seventy-five thousand, taking the total revenue line item up to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I made, I made that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I'm all in favor, except one, abstain. Carol's abstaining.
That, that amends the motion, I got to go on the whole thing.
Yep, so now we're going to go back to the, the complete motion again for the town council to amend the town manager proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one as presented. All, got a motion for that?
Make it.
All in favor?
Do you want to have a discussion for a second?
Discussion, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just want to remind everybody that this goes out for a vote, referential vote. And where do you go from here? Where do you go from here if the budget doesn't pass? You're at zero point four eight.
Then we have to cut services.
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's good with you.
Let me just make this comment. I took to heart very much what you had said last week about that little girl that you met that was crying, and she couldn't make her taxes. So I'm doing everything I think possible for that young person to at least pay her taxes this year and do the best I can without hurting services. But I will be the first one with you, Carol. If the thing goes down, everybody should expect that we're going to have to cut services. There's no other place to go.
At this point, it's totally at the bottom.
It's at the bottom.
No room, nowhere to go.
I agree. I think Mr. Kilduff did an outstanding job. Anybody to come right in and cut four hundred and thirty-five thousand right off the.
That means recognizing again.
Absolutely.
That before we even saw this budget, Carl had honed four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the budget before we even got a look at it, and I thought it was, I thought the bottom lines of what Carl had presented, that the average homeowner in Clinton would see a ten dollar per month raise in their budget, I mean, in their taxes. I didn't see that as a significant issue, honestly. So, I don't know, to me, taking money out of your savings account, spending money when the future has more question marks than the present just, just doesn't, just doesn't sit on in the head's mind, so.
I mean, I can't speak, because I don't know the future either, Carol. But let's talk a little realistic. Is anybody in this room that doesn't know or doesn't think that within three to four months, we're going to sell a piece of property up on Route Eighty-One for a little over two million dollars? And that's going to also be included. It can't be included into this one unless it got after you between now and July first, which I doubt, but it'll be next year. So, I mean, I understand your, your hesitancy, believe me. But I, again, as I said before, I don't think there's any other time in history or in the near future that we'll ever be able to give the taxpayers the break that we can give them this one time, because after this, it'll always be up, up, up. And so, but I do share your concerns that if the average taxpayer comes out there or does their usual thing and votes this thing down the first time around, then all these department heads sitting out here can expect that we're going to have to do some cutting. And I don't want to do it. No one else wants to do it, cut services, but that's the only place we could go. So I.
Well, the other difficulty that I have with all this is that, as much as you say we're going to sell a property, well, that'd be great. So we sell that property, well, then that property gets developed. If that property gets developed, then we're going to start generating some grant list tax revenue for this town. We have other properties that we're all going to be, you know, dealing with down the road, that will be generating this revenue for our town. You know, so that's something that, that all works together. So I mean, as far as staying taxes will go, go, you know, going to continue to go up down the road, that's, again, we don't know.
That's true.
I mean, it's year to year, and this is how it works, and, you know, hopefully, this town will continue to grow the way it's grown, and we're going to be able to start building up some stuff, and we're going to start generating some revenue for the town so that we can help offset those things down the road. That's just a struggle, like, like Carol's saying. I mean, yes, it's, you know, you're taking that money, yes, I get it, but, you know, I, I don't, I guess I'm on the opposite side. I think I believe in the fact that we are going to start growing, we're going to start doing things in this town. Development will start coming here, and then we will start generating our grant list revenue and making it easier for the taxpayers on that side, so.
Well, I feel as though, I, I, I worked tremendously hard to make sure that we did get development in town, and things did start to turn around, but I also feel as though we should not be taxing the taxpayer now with anticipation of that. Um, I do see the town growing. I do see more interest, and I do see the real estate prices increasing. And I know that there's not a direct correlation between your real estate value when you're selling, uh, your property. But I do see the potential, especially what's happening throughout Connecticut, is that the values are going up, and to tax the taxpayer through the mill rate now, and then later on with an assessment increase, um, concerns me.
Anybody else? So we need a second on that motion?
Correct.
What motion is this? I made the motion, right?
That was to amend it, now we need the motion to adopt it.
Make your motion to adopt.
Right, so you already have yours. You need a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. All agree.
So then, the budget you're referring for a hearing. If you take out your pens, there's a, we'll have to do some editing, because this was. This is the total budget.
First motion was to make the specific.
Second amendment. Second motion is the specific budget. So, um, expenditure section remains the same. The revenue is amended. The amount to be raised by taxes should be forty-eight million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. The amount for applied fund balance capital should be eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
So now we'll need a motion on this to.
Submit it to a.
Submit it to a public hearing.
So moves.
The second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? It's going to public hearing. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. You just have the ten seconds.
All in favor?
He's going to get those seconds in.